Okay, it is my distinct pleasure to call to order this meeting of the Committee of the Whole for City of Lake Forest Park this day. January twenty second, twenty twenty four, six P M. I believe we have three council members in attendance and three council members. I think on Zoom. Okay, all right, very good. So I guess following our agenda then. First thing we look for is public word, public comments. Are there any public comments? City clerk? Oh, okay, yeah. All right, there is no one signed in. So Mr. McLean, are there any folks online?
There is no one online.
Okay, so at this point, I'm going to close public comments. All right, so we have two discussion items and. I'm going to take them in order. The possible amendments to the governance manual, just as a introduction. The small subcommittee of myself, this council member Goldman and council members Riddle are looking over. A couple of different topics tonight will take on the public comment. A section of then for those of you who have a governance manual is section four point nine point two. So does one of you want to start the discussion?
Yeah, so the three of us discussed and really the the two things we wanted to accomplish. One was something that was flagged at last Thursday's special meeting, which was the potential issue of sort of a revolving door hostile comment. And so that is the last sentence of paragraph B, just addressing that. Once we do in person comment first, and then we do remote comment. And once we've started the remote comment, then at that point, anyone who comes in after that would not be eligible. So you have to be in the meeting by the time remote public comment starts. That's kind of, I think, the most substantive change. And then the rest of it, I think, is just a bit of wordsmithing and just. Cleaning up that, you know, you can, there is public comment both in person and virtually and a few other little things. But that's, yeah, it's basically what we were looking at.
Thank you, Councilmember Goldman. Does anybody have any questions for the committee? See, and I have one question, which is, and I know that our city attorney is not here tonight, but. The, you know, one of the words that was eliminated was an impertinent remark because nobody quite knew what that meant. But on the other hand, slanderous has also been stricken, and I'm wondering. You know, th- this is more of a philosophical question than anything else. Are we protecting slanderous speech and is the city? Libel in any way? I'm looking at, let's see, four point nine point two B about the fourth line down. And so I'm wondering, do we need to get rid of that word or is it one that we should keep?
And are you saying scandalous? Oh, slanderous.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay, because I was just looking at the email I received that referred to imperious and scandalous.
Right, yeah, that would be a different. That's actually a lea- slander is a legal term, right?
Yeah, I mean, we can check with legal counsel and see. If we want to reinstate that word.
Hey, councilmember Bodhi.
Yes, I I noticed that as well, and I think slanderous.
Sir, we can't hear you. I think the clerk is trying to raise the volume.
Oh, okay. Can you hear me now? Hello? Can you hear me now?
Yep, yes, we can.
Okay, thank you, because I was unmuted. So thank you very much. I also noticed that I thought impertinent should certainly come out. But slanderous, I also thought should stay in. And overall, I think that the committee, our small. Work group did a very good job and covered the things that we talked about at the last meeting. So I'm certainly with that one change in support of these revisions.
Hey, Councilmember Goldman.
Yeah, I'll take responsibility. I was the one who suggested taking slanderous out. My motivation was that that kind of requires a factual determination by the presiding officer. And in the heat of the moment, that could be a challenge, especially if things are moving fast. But I I'm okay if the will of the body is that we would like to keep slanderous in. I am totally fine with that.
Anyone else? Okay, well, I wanted to thank my two colleagues on working on this, and I especially love, I'm going to call out section C. In which the author, the date of email, the topic will be read into the public record. I thought that was a great addition. So hopefully, basically, that will encourage people to contribute written comments as well. Councilmember Riddle.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay. I was wondering if we wanted to add under B disruptive slanderous or threatening remarks or actions. Knowing that, you know, if someone is disruptive physically, but quietly, that that would be also something that. The presiding officer would be able to say, we need that person removed from most. Mostly that would be in the council chambers. What do my colleagues think of that addition?
Uh, councilmember Good? I think you're still muted. Uh, councilmember Saunders.
Hello?
Okay, we have you. Uh, is this is councilmember Good, right?
Yes.
Okay, great, go ahead.
No, I've been listening.
Oh, it's just that your hands up. So in the meanwhile, we'll go to councilmember Saunders and come back to councilmember Good.
Oh, thank you, colleagues. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
You can. Okay. Oh, I just wanted to comment on councilmember Riddle. Addition of action. I think that's an excellent idea. I'd like to support that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, so let's try going back to councilmember Good.
Yes, I agree with councilmember Riddle. And her changes.
All right, thank you for your comment. Are there any?
To interject here, but I just wanted to make a comment since Ms. Pratt is not here, that. The state defines disruption. So it's another way to approach this is to say if the steep, the speaker is disruptive. And then go on to the speech part, that that is another way to approach it, because it's a specific RCW that defines disruption. And I think it's important for us to make sure that we're thinking about that at the same time.
And to clarify, that also means actions, then.
Indeed. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other comments on this topic? So we'll move on to the next one. And we have a guest today. We have. Right, I apologize. We have Mr. Lowry, Kevin Lowry from NEMCO to give us a presentation on the Emergency Operations Center.
All right, good evening, everyone. Hopefully, everyone can hear me online. And hopefully, everyone can see the PowerPoint here. This is essentially a kind of a, I'll try to make it quick. Presentation about E O C operations for elected officials, essentially. With the changeover of council, I'm trying to remind all the city councils, both Kenmore and Lake Forest Park, about. The role that elected officials will play during a disaster. It's pretty crucial and key role, but is also a little bit different than your fire chief, police chief and emergency manager or. City administrator or mayor and depending on the the situation. So this is normally this E O C operations class. I did it this weekend in about two and a half hours for my volunteers, so I'm going to try to cut that down a bit. But there's about thirty some odd slides, and I wanted to make sure we touch on a refresher a little bit about I C S. E O C, what what's purposes, Emergency Operations Center. And I want to take this time to remind everybody too, that I know we've had some new folks come on board, and it's been a while with COVID since. We've really got it back in the I C S training. That hopefully everyone is going on to the FEMA's website to do their minimum training, which is your I C S one hundred, two hundred. And your seven hundred and eight hundred, right? They're they're independent study courses. That cover the incident command system and then our role within the the National Incident Management Framework, right? So that's a seven hundred and eight hundred piece. So those are like the four baseline classes everyone should take. If you're interested in really doing a deep dive in emergency operations for E O C, that's a twenty two hundred is that course number. But that's by far not required, and I'm really kind of, I took those three hundred slides and. Paired it down to to really form this presentation for you. So hopefully, you you still get a bit out of it, so. Where am I pointing to get this to work here, Matt? There we go. Oh, went too far ahead. Okay, so kind of, we'll really quick. This is what we're going to touch on tonight. Again, I'll try to speed through this as best we can, so it's not two and a half hours in length for everyone. But we're just going to describe what E O C does, some of the factors of staffing and organizing our E O C. The factors in that have a role in making an effective E O C and then a. Considerations for deactivating and then the key concepts. And there is a. A tabletop kind of activity at the end of this that we can just kind of cut for the evening, but we'll discuss the the premise and reasoning for it. And again, a lot of this is so that you have an understanding while you won't be in the E O C itself. Helping to make those tactical decisions, because as we will learn, the tactical decisions aren't even made in the E O C. It's much more the. Strategic, the objectives, you know, the setting the goals for the incident that then the operational commanders, you know, the people that are out at the fire scene or at the car accident or. Public Works Road crews clearing debris, they're making the tactical decisions about how many chainsaws they need and who's. Going where to actually clear a road or respond to an incident. But the role you play is key to supporting that entire system, right? So one of the key pieces that E O C does is is provide coordination, right? We were talking about multi-agency coordination. We want to gather as much information as we can into the E O C. It's really, we're funneling information through so that we have. A real good picture of what's happening so we can support on scene operations. And essentially, this is demonstrating the NIM's principles of flexibility, right? So we don't normally command the incident from the E O C. But we share the load of the incident commander, helping to kind of take some stuff off their plate so they can focus on the tactical. Response, the actual managing the incident at on scene. However. For certain incidents like large windstorms or regional events, that doesn't mean you we couldn't, right? The E O C can take over some of the incident command functions, especially for those broader incidents. So. Some of our coordination functions we carry out is collecting and analyzing information, again, supporting the resource needs. So if we're hearing from a commander on scene that they need an additional resource, a lot of that is processed through the the E O C. And then coordinating the plans to determine future needs and then providing coordination and policy direction. And the biggest piece is. This pointer works, but that policy direction component is really where elected officials come in to to play. So we are really trying to consolidate and exchange information in one location to help streamline this process. All right, so where is E O C and NIMs coming to play? If you really take a look at the chart to the right side of the screen here. Your National Incident Management System talks about resource management, your command and coordination, your communications and information management. That one on the far right is really like your fusion center. Type role where they're taking in threat analysis and risk analysis and letting communicating that down to the county and then thus to. Say me as your emergency manager, that's every being relayed down to your police chiefs and fire chiefs to say, hey, here's what we're looking at. But in that center column, you have the command and control piece, and that's where the E O C links in with the incident command system. In in the field to make sure we're in line with the federal standard and the federal system. So we really, those are three main components that are your resource management, your command and coordination, and your communication information management. It is not, NIMs is not an operational incident management plan. It is not a resource allocation plan. It is really not any kind of plan for you to take and say, this is our response plan to a. Earthquake or to any any kind of specific event. It is a guiding principle to give you. Direction in organizing the rest of our plans. And here's where our E O Cs fit into the I C S system. Essentially, in incident command system, it's talking about the five major functional areas, which is your command. Operations, so the command staff, your higher ups, right? Your instant commander or your unified command, which is in this area where we might, if you had an earthquake or a large windstorm. Might get all of our key people together to make a unified command. And your command staff with your public information officer, safety officer and liaisons and myself. And then across the bottom with your general staff is where you have your operations, planning, logistics. And then your finance and administration. And you'll see in our org chart, we've kind of combined finance and administration with logistics. As a resource branch. This is what a lot of local jurisdictions have done, really just because of staffing, right? And most small communities. Don't have the staff to really hold four branches. So and a lot of times purchasing and finance are in the same office. And you want to kind of mirror your everyday operations when you do this. So combining those branches is what we've ended up doing here. So it's a critical link to the response, right? Our instant command. System links in with our emergency operations centers to coordinate that on scene. Activities with the different. Other agencies that might be at play within the jurisdiction. So we really want to try to track down our resources. We're going to see. Kind of acquire, allocate and track our resources. So if you have, say, three or four earthquake hits and you have three or four fires that break. Break out and set around the city, the E O C will manage those resources, who's going where, when. It's not going to come out of your standard dispatching protocols. Because it's going to be basically a resource emergency. But we're going to also keep track of as one fire truck might clear one scene, it's going to go to the next, and the E O C is is tracking all that information. It's going to manage it and share it, right? So you're going to share it with other E O Cs in the region, up to the county, if there's other resource requests. And then act as liaison to other jurisdictions. And this is the example of your water district, right? Think of a fire scene. If there's an issue with water pressure, having someone from a water district to be able to be right there in a E O C to say, okay, we're on it. We have our crews heading out. Especially if you're dealing with an earthquake or other infrastructure has been damaged. It's great to have those liaisons in your E O C. And then providing legal, financial and administrative support, because having, being able to go to your policy group, which is where this, the elected officials, you guys would be housed. In that that policy group. To discuss policy guidance and then check that against legal. Our legal support to make sure that we're acting in line with anything that's legal and expected and hitting our requirements. So essentially, and that's where this coordinating the support with the multi-agency coordination group, this MAC group, that's the official. I C S NIM's name for what is otherwise called a policy group, which is where your elected officials, you guys would be. Coming into this system. And there you're determining your resource prioritization, allocation among incidents. Enabling decision making amongst elected and appointed officials and the incident command. So the way this works is. Our primary E O C is Station fifty one, for example, right? Most likely, we'd be gathering the elected officials from the region and for a regional response. Probably at Kenmore City Hall, or if we're just a Lake Forest event, Lake Forest Park event, we might be downstairs in the E O C. And you might be up here in in the council chambers where. Our incident command, we communicating with you about, here's our strategic objectives, here's our goals, here's what we're trying to do in the next operational period. And then getting input for policy direction and overall guidance of the event to say, well, we really want to see this part of town to break cleared here first. Because we have these other concerns and then that that discussion. Then brought back to the E O C to say, hey, here's where what our guidance has been from our elected officials. Now we need to make this happen. If that makes sense to everybody. That's how those two things link link together. Looking through this kind of pyramid here to separate, you know, the policy group is way up top, your E O C operations is where policy meets coordination, right? And then that coordination all the way down to the responders, which a lot of that happens inside the E O C too, but that's where your I C S system. Comes into play. So that that graphic there is probably the quickest way to capture these things. Some of the well issues jurisdictions with well organized E O Cs have several distinct advantages. And this is, I'm stressing this part because I want you to understand how important it is to support your emergency management. System and the activities that, you know, we get NEMCO do for you. But really, it makes the whole response much more efficient, right? To be able to, you know, allow as incident commanders to focus on managing the actual incident. It promotes problem resolution at the lowest practical level. Provides strategic guidance and direction normally from. The elected officials to the incident management activities so that we really know that the people's needs are being met, right? And then the biggest thing also is serving as that conduit to pass information between responders all the way up to the E O C. To the policy group and then up to other E O Cs in the area, county, state, fusion center, things like that. Okay, so I'm gonna, that kind of already spoke to a lot of this. If everyone's never ever attended any of my classes before, I I'll. Speak a lot upfront and hopefully cut out some slides in the end. Biggest piece of this is interoperability, right? To make sure that we can work together between across jurisdictions, right? Multiple cities working together. And then agencies, so multiple agencies within that jurisdiction working together. The the goal here is to manage our information, manage our resources and plan for the next operational period. So you have a large scale event. That's going over several days, maybe several weeks. What the E O C is really focused on is is. That is having a good common operating picture for the current event and developing plans for the next operational period, which is usually a twenty four or twelve hour cycle. Okay, so it may also manages things like emergency shelters, community points of distribution. The list here is really those those things that affect an incident on the side, where we're not necessarily putting the fire out in a building. Or worrying about, you know, the debris, because we have the public works crews and the incident commanders and the tactical operations taking care of that. But the Emergency Operations Center is facilitating the support of the rest of the incident. So finding shelters for people, establishing shelters. Figuring out how we have a truckload of water coming in, where are we going to put it? And how are we going to get it to the community, right? Those are the problems being solved in the E O C. And then providing coordination with that our policy direction to make sure that that's happening. So. That that communication will be happening to you to say, hey, here's what we've figured out, here's our plan. And getting that feedback and that circle, that loop of communication to make sure that. We are meeting the the strategic goals. And here's kind of the piece of the communication. So these two graphics. Our our incidents are best managed at the lowest level, but they're based off geography, you know, organizational structure and then your jurisdictions. So if you looked at a local, state and federal levels, right, you work your way up. There's a graphic we have a little bit later. It's like a target, right? You start every individual person being prepared. And you work your way out, the same thing applies to the levels of government. So making sure that our we're resigning appropriately. If there's a resource we don't have, we need to request it goes to the state, it's done through the E O C. And then up to the federal government, right? And then the E O C also does the communications between other local E O Cs. And if you see on the chart there, how you kind of have the branch off to go to other incident commands. And that's a situation where you have multiple fires or multiple accidents or an accident over here and a fire over here because of, you know, down power lines. That the E O C can manage all those different incidences incidents through the one location. All right, obviously, the benefits here, we help establish, maintain and share situational awareness. That's the big piece where you're looking at the information you have, getting a good view of what's happening now and what you're expecting to happen in the near future. You know, this helps facilitate long term operations, because while the tactical commanders are worrying about the next couple minutes, the next couple hours at the actual incident. B O C is worrying about the next few days, the next several weeks, and then eventually the. The full, maybe several months or years of a recovery, depending on on the incident and its size. It improves continuity and it provides a ready access to essential information, right? When you have a poll for information, the state. The county or even any of your public officials want, hey, how many residents do we have affected by this? Well, the E O C should be tracking as much of that information as possible. So we have a quick ready answer to say, well, we have. Fifty two residents who are displaced and without without a home tonight, or we have eighteen hundred places, you know, residences without power, right? That type of of data will be held at the E O C. And then it promotes resource identification and assignment, right? You're, all of that is tracked to the E O C. All right, and these are your actual technical critical needs that are hit with your E O C functioning, right? Situational awareness, policy direction, communication. As you take I C S one hundred, two hundred, seven hundred, eight hundred, you will go through that again. And then some of the factors is to consider, right? When we establish an E O C, like the one downstairs and the one over Station fifty one, you really got to think about. Jurisdictions and the hazards you may face. If you really look at the map of the fault lines, if you had an event here, an earthquake event. City Hall is in an area where maybe at risk for landslide and some of the ground underneath is moving pretty significantly, right? So the E O C, that's a threat to the E O C downstairs. So that's why I plan for alternatives, I plan for backups, right? We establish an organizational structure, what's it going to look like for each event. And then our staffing requirements, which is again, part of my job now, which is going through and teaching I C S talks like this. Even the hands training I do with the volunteers, things like that, to help make sure that we are, our staff is ready to go. Understanding our facility requirements, the equipment we need, and then the authorities and procedures for actually establishing that E O C. So in our case, we have, and this is again, a federal standard standard that we've we've basically copied here. Is that we have three levels of activation. Level three is your monitoring. And I know Phil probably gets this when there is a big heat wave coming through in the summertime or a big snow event, usually build a slide deck. Send it out to all the NEMCO partners to, hey, here's what we're projecting to see for the week. Here's my thoughts on on our current situation. And any actions we need to take or don't need to take. That's based off of my communication with other county partners. And it's sent out kind of as that initial monitoring of the situation. That's like a level three. Activation. We're not activating the E O C. I'm just taking on those roles of the I C S system to make sure that everyone's informed of what's going on. Partial activations, if we were actually going to open the doors, put the communication unit in there. Have a situation unit for most COVID, the initial code response, for example, I was in Philadelphia managing. We were counting masks and hand sanitizer and who was getting ill and. How many people were quarantined? That's really just managing, it's called a sit, it's a situational unit. To make sure we, everyone had, all decision makers had a picture of what was currently going on. So that's like your level two partial activation. And then your full scale is a twenty four seven operation for in response to an event. So those are your three levels. And again, the decision to to activate that E O C is going to come from the city manager slash administrator, right? Or the mayor, because we have a strong mayor city here. Will is going to make that decision. Furthermore, we also then have, we delegated that down to you have your. The chief of police is your emergency management director for the city, and then me as your emergency manager to be able to. Say, hey, we need to open up this E O C. Our incident commanders, fire chiefs. People are out there responding to incidents are looking at what's going on, the size, how it's evolving. They're going to strongly recommend, they're going to call me, we're going to call Phil, we're going to have a conversation and say, hey, we need to have. E O C opened up, right? And that's a strong recommendation from them, what their needs are as things get expand past their control. But we need to understand where where some of the the authorities are delegated. Again, I'll kind of go through this really quick. This is something I have to worry about a bunch as. The role I will fill as the E O C manager and really talk into the city to say, hey, who do we need to call in for this this event? But essentially FEMA classifies an event in five types, right? Your type five is your lowest concern. The clock on the side there indicates how long it's going to be. So let's just say it's one operational period with a couple people working on it. As you can see, up to type one, which is several working groups, and I like to joke around when I teach this guy pointing at everybody, that's the boss, right? So you have several team leads, but telling a lot of people what to do over several operational periods. Well, that is going to really need an E O C. So you don't need a full E O C for every activation. So this is, you know, but that's just for your awareness, this is how. FEMA types this. So if we have an incident take place, it might not be a full open E O C, it could just be a level two activation, and we look at. The length of the operation versus the staff involved. The complexity of incidents, if it's a hazmat incident, it might require an activation, even though it's maybe one operational period or it's. Small number of people because the complexity of the job they're doing. But that's just how we would type the event to make that decision. And then delegation of authorities, the next piece, again, remembering that we need to have our successor's name. This is all done through a comprehensive emergency management plan, which was done by Lake Forest Park just before I got hired, so. We do another, I think, three or four years. But this, you're making sure you have these people noted so that if someone's not around, that you can, you have someone who has actual authority delegated them to to act while there. And this is just the example of the structure. So. In our case, this is your standard structure on the right hand side here, your E O C director. Now, when we don't have an incident commander in place, kind of like the way Kirkland runs it is. The emergency manager ends up taking over the E O C manager role, making sure that all these pieces are are working. As the branches are doing their job. And on the left here, it might be hard to see because it's a white background, is how we've divided the E O C up now is with the operations section. Planning section and then this resource section, which is then subdivided out for support and services as far as helping to support the operation going forward. This full org chart is not, again, not needed for every event. It's just laid out ahead of time so we understand how it would be structured if the event expanded. Okay. Again, I'm going to kind of go through this because I don't want to keep you too long here, but your. E O C affecting this communications is one of the key points that NIMs talks about to make sure we have an effective E O C. And the piece that, the four key areas is. And the piece that, that the four key areas is interoperability. Reliability, stability and portability and resiliency and redundancy and then security. So to be able to, enabling personnel and organizations to communicate within and across jurisdictions, right? We have P CERN as our new radio system, which has significantly improved our interoperability between different agencies that, that function within Lake Forest Park. And then the reliability scalability portion, right? We should be able to be suitable to use with a single jurisdiction and agency. Single jurisdiction, but multiple agencies, right? So police and fire, it with all within Lake Forest Park or multiple jurisdictions, say Kenmore and Lake Forest Park. With multiple agencies that, so the E O C operations can cover all of that. And then resiliency and redundancy, right? So really, we're talking about the ability of the system to withstand and, and perform after damage of infrastructure. This is where, say, we'll use P CERN as the example, right? Our primary response function is through P CERN. But we still maintain the ham, ham operators for communication. They are actually now, the technology is advanced where they can send resource requests through email over ham radio. With that, we also kind of taking off of like A C S shoreline's model, and they have a great example, they have CB radios, marine radios. Actually have the ability to talk to rescue aircraft coming in. You know, having all those other radio channels available to us in our E O C helps with that resiliency and redundancy to make sure that if P CERN is bogged down with traffic on the police side. Or for some reason a tower is lost during an earthquake, we still have other forms of communication to make sure that we're getting a communication out there. And then security, right? We're going to be handling a lot of sensitive information within an E O C to make sure we can keep that secure and not have it distributed to the public when it shouldn't be, or if it's personal information of the public that is being handled appropriately. And this is kind of talking about our sit pick, right? A sit pick is your situational awareness. And taking in that data, analyzing it, taking the information, kind of boiling it down, providing an update to all the key partners within the E O C, and then sharing that situational picture and disseminating it appropriately to, to where it needs to go. So this is a key role of the E O C and most of this is done under the planning section. And then of course your documentation, keeping records of everything, even just so that we could submit proper reimbursement to the Stafford Act or other emergency declarations. We have to keep records of everything. That all, the other piece is an after action report, which should we be doing after every use of the E O C, every time it's activated, we stand up at any level, where are you doing after action reports? So keeping the documentation, documentation squared away is very important. Our, one of our primary ways of doing that is web E O C, which we'll be doing next quarter for the employees to kind of refresh her on that. But that is what the county uses for most of our resource requests and keeps a pretty good piece of situational awareness. All right, so this is the, the, one of the key things I want you guys to focus in on is our joint information system, right? So this is really where the J I C comes in, which is your joint information center. So your P I Os, people writing your press releases, developing your messaging, things like that, that they work within the J I C. There were, there's a important piece because a lot of times the elected officials, be it the mayor or anybody else standing in instead. Will be the, you know, the, the face or the mouthpiece of the response, because you're the, you're the community leader, right? When the community, community is looking to and for answers to based off an incident, they'll look for the police chief, the fire chief, right? They're not necessarily going to be looking for me, they're going to be looking for their elected official to stand up there and make sure that they're being represented and taken care of. However, working with the joint information center across this joint information system where the information is shared. It's very important to make sure we're speaking as one voice, make sure that what is being said to the, the public is on par with what somebody else might be messaging. So say we're talking about a multi-jurisdictional response, is Lake Forest Park and Kenmore, they both messaging the same, same thing coming out of our U O C. So that's just one example. Also, are you sharing? You want to pre-share information that you shouldn't share yet, especially when it comes to like next of kin information or or, you know, mortality rates or anything like that, you again, make sure that, hey, this system's in place. So that you get the nod from the operational commander saying, yep, we've done all the next of kin notifications, we're okay to, to announce, you know, fatalities or, you know, the various numbers. So that this system's important and you will plug into this system throughout the event when we get to that part of what you'll see is the planning P, when you get to your, your, your planning cycle and then you step out for another media brief, you'll be plugging into the system there, right? This is really just the best piece for this is for awareness for you guys, when we talk about incident needs and resources, this is really to set clear expectations, right? Incident's going to develop and if you look at the chart at the bottom, every incident, you, you will never going to have the, the resources you need on scene immediately when the, when the event takes place. So just to remind everybody, there is this curve of the incident needs the resource, there's a time lapse for requesting it and getting it on scene. And having the response take place. And now as the need falls off because we're handling the response appropriately. The resource will fall off, right? Again, they're, they're not, those two arcs are never aligned. And that's in the front end to set clear expectations to know that it takes time to get resources rolling. On the back end, I understand that as you no longer need the resource, you should be, we should be, nope, demobilizing it. So that it can get kind of rehabbed and ready to go for the next time it's needed, which is what the, the chart is for the cycle. This is the planning P, this is what the E O C lives by basically as far as developing briefs, point making plans, briefing the next operational period. Again, just for your awareness, when you talk about the planning P, this is in I C S one or two hundred, so when you hit the class, you'll see it. But this is the cycle that the E O C will be living by to develop the next incident action plan for the next operational period as we go through the incident. And this is your deactivation, like energy entering recovery, right? So a piece I want you all to understand for this, recovery is not just a, hey, the incident's over. Where we return the most, the most normal situation we had, we can have, this is a short-term, intermediate and long-term cycle. So you can have some quick wins where in the short term, we're, we're pretty normal, but we have to say write some grants and get some infrastructure rebuilt that is going to take, you know, up to years to get done. So you have the different phases of recovery to get the city back to where it should be. Or as close to pre-incident as possible. And of course, we kind of skip to the activation side of things. All right, so now here's the, your, your specific slides. So key responsibilities, you're responsible for ensuring a public safety and welfare of the people of that jurisdiction, so of Lake Forest Park here. And how are you doing that though? Most of that's done by by trusting your police chief, your fire chief and, and your other people you've put into the, the roles and positions to fill within that E O C to understand, like we kind of just went through those grueling slides in, in record pace, I think. To make sure that you understand what's happening there and you have faith in them that they're going to perform their work as, as efficiently and best as possible with the interest of the public in mind. The next three things there, you're providing strategic policy guidance for response and recovery efforts in that order. So life safety is number one. Incident stabilization second, and then our property conservation, which includes your environmental and your economic impacts, trying to mitigate and limit those. Those are the three response priorities and they are in that order, right? So we will be taking care of life safety first. Making sure that the incident gets stabilized, so it doesn't, nothing gets worse. And then try to conserve as much property as possible and then work towards you know, recovery from there, right? But that's your response phase right there. Those are the, those are the three priorities. So when we start talking about, if we're still worrying about life safety. And say the incident commander comes to you to have a conversation about strategic goals. Just keep that in mind if you start talking about incident, incident stabilization or say economic impacts while we're still handling life safety. You'll probably get a little pushback from your incident commander or a reminder of, hey, here are our priorities, right? The incident, life safety first and then economic impacts. So just keep that in mind. And then, as I mentioned, you know, to lead the public through the incident by representing their interests to, into the response system and participating in communications of important information whenever necessary, right? Again, speaking with one voice. So it's coming into the press conferences, it's participating in drafting the our, our media releases to the extent that essentially you have P I Os, you have trained communications people who will be in the E O C drafting these things for you. But they're going to probably be brought to you to say, hey, this is what we're messaging, does this sound good to everybody? And having that conversation upfront and, and understanding what we're putting out. And again, that it's something that you would stand by. This is kind of the, the other piece before the incident ever happens, right? Before we worry about having an earthquake, you know, a seven-point something earthquake here and Olympia at the same time, as we talked about before. The, any of that, promoting community preparedness is key, right? It's a very important piece for all the elected officials in this emergency management system. Because if you look at this target that's up there is individuals and families first, right? The, the whole system is based off of if someone can take, takes care of themselves. The next level only gets involved if the incident or event goes past what they can handle. The same thing applies to local government, the county will get involved when it's out, when we can no longer handle it as Lake Forest Park, right? And again, same thing, state and federal government will get in when the, when the lower level can no longer handle the incident. Now, is that through complexity via, say, subject matter experts that are needed? Is it through, we've now exhausted all of our resources and our staffing? Those are the ways we will get past our, our threshold. But one of the things that I do on a, you know, pretty consistent basis is community preparedness, right? Getting out there and speaking to the community. And at basically every event, I remind them that if, when a disaster strikes. Assume your police and fire are already exhausted, right? Assume that they are not coming. Because if you look at the statistics, twenty-nine percent of Americans have not prepared because they think that emergency responders will be helping them at the time of a disaster, right? And sixty percent expect to rely on emergency responders for the first seventy-two hours. Well, the reality is that we've seen a case study after case study after case study. Is that unless you're involved in the actual incident, say, the really bad car accident, the bombing in Boston. The hurricane itself, where you're on your roof waiting for someone to actively rescue you. If you're not directly involved in that, there's, that's what the responders will be doing. They'll be busy doing that, so they won't be able to handle the heart attack that's happening at the same time. Or they won't be able to handle the gas leak that's a result of the primary incident, things like that, right? So, you know, again, with N M Co, we train people to shut off their own utilities, have their go-bags ready to first aid and stop the bleed and other trainings so that they can kind of self-rescue until we've cleared those initial hurdles in the incident. That then the police and fire are freed up to start taking some of those lower priority calls. Does that make sense? So if you ever at one of my talks, you hear me talking about, hey, don't rely on the police and fire, nothing against them. It's just that I'm trying to break this mold and this mindset that people don't need to prepare because we have a great nine-on-one system here in the United States. So people are relying too heavily on it essentially. And then, so some more preparedness principles, collaboration, integration. Person, personal and organizational preparedness, business continuity, for example, if you're in, in the public sector. And then volunteer service. Through this, a lot of what I do in N M Co is collaborating with partners, right? Trying to build these relationships ahead of time so that when something happens, we have, we, everyone showing up to the table and able to, to respond. Working through systems like P CERN and other mutual aid agreements, the now all partners from N M Co are signed on to the county's framework for mutual aid. So that we all can integrate together and make sure we're sharing resources appropriately. And then again, teaching the classes, going to the community organizations and groups to make sure we're working towards preparedness. And then our volunteer corps, right? I mean, it's hard to quantify, I mean, I can, I can take the volunteer hours, we can add a number to it, we can quantify it. But the reality is having a, a well-staffed volunteer corps to fill in the gaps where we don't have police, we don't have fire to help do some of those initial damage assessments to help do some initial first aid and light search and rescue. That helps kind of plus up our bench strength, so to say, when you're talking about a response. So right now, you know, this past year has been a, a big push for me is to build up that volunteer corps, which has been very successful. We have a really good group of people that are training in a lot of areas to include this August, we pulled out the fire rehab truck for shoreline fire to help with fire rehab at fire scenes, right? So getting, managing that volunteer corps is, is very important just for the overall preparedness of our jurisdiction. And then here's kind of a decent graphic that explains hopefully how this all flows together, if you didn't catch it from the previous twenty-five slides. So if you look at the, kind of what I call the pancake model on the left. This, the policy group is, it hovers above that worrying about strategic issues, right? You're supporting the I C S and the E O C through policy guidance and securing resource allocations and kind of making sure that if we're having an issue getting a, a snowplow from somewhere that you know, maybe we make some phone calls to other city council if we need to, right? But setting that strategic level goal, i- is that kind of disc hovering around above the E O C coordination and support. Where if you look at the white text, text, right? The meat and potatoes of the response is handled through that E O C under, under the direction of the policy group and under the kind of setting of those strategic goals. And that support provided by the elected officials. And then it's our tactical commanders out there working with the I C S system to do the actual operations in the field. And this is your joint information system kind of outlined here laterally, where you have your policy group making decisions, setting that strategic guidance, the E O C implementing that, setting goals, setting objectives. But it's the, it's the incident commanders out on the scenes exercising the tactics, again. Any questions? That's, that's the gist of it. And this is the scenario that we can easily, we can, we can forego for the evening, but essentially what this is talking about. If we were running through this whole class, we, is, there's many slides setting up the, the baseline of your mythical, I see some smiles or read the community that lives somewhere on the east coast between Canada and Florida, right? But the idea here is to get a good understanding of what the community needs. And I, I kind of feel like for the most part, everyone in this room understands that you know, when disaster hits, it's really supporting that system, making sure we're getting our resources, understanding the difference between if it's a say, a summer banned series in the park where a disaster happens that the, say, police staffing or fire department that's present in that park was really meant to handle a two-hundred-person event, not a, someone driving an eighteen-wheeler truck through that, right? And that we need to get other resources in there, we need to respond with maybe some subject matter experts. Different medical units, that it's going to change the profile. So you might say, oh, there's police on scene, we don't need to worry about it. No, that it's a bigger, it changes the profile of the event considerably. And that said, it's one of the things that I have a goal for, for me here is to get Lake Forest Park and Kenmore, you know, the N M Co partners used to using the E O C more frequently, right? I visited Kirkland, they have, again, it's easier when you have a established E O C consistently where it's built, it's in place all the time. But whenever there's a fireworks, Fourth of July celebration. Large-scale community event, you stand up the E O C because you're not just planning for the event you have, you're planning for that what if? You know, what if that truck does drive through that crowd? What if there is a plane crash? What if that earthquake hits during this? What if, you know, and you're planning to support that just in case it happens? So that's a great for trying to be prepared for an event. But it's also great practice to get the E O C exercised, to get the people who are staffing it used to showing up and understanding where they're sitting and understanding the forms and understanding the, the entire process. Before we're dealing with an earthquake, before we're dealing with, you know, a building collapse or something that's going to warrant the, the full level one activation of the E O C. Any questions?
Counsel, do you have any questions for our guest speaker? Counsel member Leva.
Thank you, Mr. Lowry. Very nice presentation. You mentioned the sort of standing up in E O C in preparation for if you have large events. So as council members, are there opportunities for us to participate or witness a mock sort of E O C incident so that we can get a sense of what goes on and?
Yeah, absolutely. So currently, we're looking for third quarter this year to have a tabletop exercise, in which case you're welcome to, to jump on and, and what we would probably be doing is keep, keep you there so you can see what's happening in the E O C, but also you kind of put you off the side so you can be that policy group and understand what it means to, you know, to see what's happening, but kind of be off to the side, having to kind of give the hands off, given that strategic guidance, right? It's part of leadership, it's always a challenge of leadership. But with that also, there are other opportunities throughout the year. Currently, we do do more like a level two activation for our fifth Saturday exercises, which is a ham radio exercise that we've just expanded within, within N M Co, where we now pulled us to cert team in as well. And we do a functional exercise with the role players on the ground where they're practicing their skills, doing building searches, treating medical triage situations. And then this last one, we, there's been a drone program we've been piloting, we've used a drone to look for missing persons and integrated Lake Forest Park's police department into that. So their responders role-played as if they went out for a missing persons call and what it was, would be like to have these volunteers come out. So with that, we always stand up the communications component within the E O C. And that's a Saturday morning, you're always more than welcome to come out for that too, to kind of just see what the operational arm looks like a little bit with, from that partial E O C activation out to the volunteer corps working in the field. And that's, that's the spring and the fall, fifth Saturdays are the ones that we participate in. So if you, you're more than, you're always more than welcome to come out and just shoot me an email, we can make, make it happen for you. So.
Thank you very much.
I think we have a council member Bodie on Zoom.
Yes, thank you very much. And thank you for a, a very intense and action and information-filled presentation. I used to work for Bonneville Power, so I'm kind of familiar with a lot of the components and layers that you've been presenting here. And it's a lot to digest if you haven't been through it once before. I wanted to ask you a question about community preparedness because I recall having been through some Cascadia earthquake exercises in my previous job. That one of the things that, points that you made. points that you made about police and fire will not be available to you, the more serious the incident. So if it's a Cascadia grade air, event, earthquake event, the longer the time that, but you know, before you could count on any support services getting to you. So what are your thoughts on, on trying to encourage greater community preparedness now? Because of course you don't need it till you need it. But I, I remember being kind of surprised that it could be two weeks, three weeks before you could get any medical, police or fire emergency services in case of a major earthquake event.
So it's a great question and it's something that we really, it's vitally important to that center dot, right? That individual preparedness on the, on the target. Before we start to suck kind of resources out of the local government, you know, because they're going to get exhausted really fast with that real, that, the kind of bulk of the incident. So one of the things that I'm doing year round is that community preparedness piece, right? Trying to, we offer, we're shooting for two community preparedness workshops this year as well as maintaining our certain races groups, right? To help kind of educate the community and have the volunteer corps ready to go. And that's the integration, right? I was just talking to Shoreline Fire Department on Friday about they're hosting a community preparedness event workshop on the seventeenth of February. And they're like, hey, we don't want to step on your toes. Like it's not stepping on toes. So anybody who's helping getting the community more prepared, you know, more than more power to them. And we're advertising for them, getting, getting that involved. So it's kind of linking everybody into the system who wants to work towards preparedness and, and, and share that information. The quicker we can get it out there, the better. And to your point about the timeframe, one thing you noticed, I think even the county and the state started to realize is we used to have map your neighborhood program. Then it turned into a two weeks ready and now it's prepare in a year. And the, the timeframe keeps getting longer for the recommendation that you need to prepare within your home. It used, you know, again, I'm from the East Coast, so it'd be, you know, a couple of days. But as soon as I moved out here, we lost power for a week, week and a half, and that was normal, right? So to make sure that our residents understand that, that while we live in a basically a suburb of Seattle, a suburb of a city, you, you could have a long duration power outage, you could have a long winter storm. And the example I'll give is the Kenmore fire in the, the last time I spoke to this council was the night that we were trying to find homes for fifty two people who were displaced because of a, a small fire in a, in a utility box. Well, when we were trying to get the power turned back on, I was working with the P S E liaison, the government liaison, and all their trucks were out dealing with windstorms on Comano Island. So just getting the power turned back on took a week just to get the trucks to be moved into this jurisdiction. So the more we can communicate that to the public to make them understand the reality of the situation, what resources are really around and how they'll get used up in the incident helps them kind of get that real, my personal opinion is all about aligning expectations, right? They'll have a true understanding of the expectations and that it's not an, you know, an act of neglect or a poor planning on the government's part or the police department's part. It's just that these are the needs of our, our area and the way that we kind of get geographically broken up because of the mountains. You know, because of the, you know, just even the terrain change within Lake Forest Park changes what the snow is going to look like and the ice is going to look like, right? If you just looked at last week's weather forecast, it was usually between four hundred to five hundred foot elevation change was dictating whether you had snow, ice or, or rain. So if we can align their, their expectation ahead of time through community education so that when these events take place, they, oh, okay, here's what's, here's what's happening. Here's what my, my community is doing for me. Here are the things that, that are taking place and this is why I'm not seeing a snowplow or a, a police car yet, right? To make sure that they understand that. On the more operational side of things, the more, you know, rubber hits the road. One thing that I'm working for is an, a kind of big push I have is the community points of distribution program. So we've been doing a lot of radio communication classes with, with the community that are not ham classes where you need to have a, you know, pass a test and have a license to operate. But the G M R S, F R S radios, kind of taking that map your neighborhood idea and integrating into the communities to say, hey, you know, we would like to establish community points of distribution with kind of command posts that our volunteers are now trained man through staff, that also will connect into kind of a, a mirror of what Seattle's done with their hubs program. Where within the local, the small communities, within the cul-de-sacs and the little, the community groups. So for example, Lake Forest Park, every national night out, we travel and we visit the block parties, right? Kind of the sub organized, organized block parties being, be having a hub there where they have this, a few people with G M R S radios that can then communicate to that community point of distribution that will act as a small incident command post for part of the city that will then plug into our E O C through the ham radio or P CERN because these, they'll hopefully be fully equipped to be able to communicate with the E O C with whatever interoperability or is needed. So that really from the E O C perspective, we can have a, a, a link and a view into each community to know what the response, what's, what is, what does it look like on these blocks? What do they really need? Because while police and fire are fighting a fire or dealing with, you know, five twenty two being closed for debris or whatever the, the event is, the E O C is supporting that, but also by making sure the rest of the community is taken care of. And we can not clog up the nine on one system with calls, looking, people looking for water. We can know, okay, well, this community is communicating a need to us. Let's get water to that local community point of distribution. Let's get food out there. Okay, they're, they're having some issues with, you know, intermittent power. Let's see if we can get them some generators. And we can handle that through the E O C system, you know, through the emergency operations center and not have to have that go through nine on one.
Yeah, that, that identifying distribution points ahead of time so that you have a network of that, that sounds really interesting.
Yeah, so we're in, we're in.
For a big, you know, a big incident.
Yeah, and we're, and where we're at with that now is internally, our, our ham operators and our cert team is trained. They, we've, we've exercised it twice to set up that kind of incident command post that would work with that. And now we're starting, we're, we're really pushing those community classes so that the community will learn how to use the G M R S radios and communicate with us. And then last year we came in, we were first runner up for a grant to try to purchase a trailer that would act as that that C pod. So we're trying to get, find the funds to, to build the, to build the actual units themselves that can go out into the community.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you for NEMCO's participation in stuff like a national night out as well as picnic in the park. I think having high visibility is a really important, you know, in getting the community prepared, as you're saying. And so just a couple of questions I had was for our streaming audience, what's G R S radio?
So you have a F R S, which is your family, it's like a family band essentially. And then the next one up is kind of the higher wattage, bigger radio system. You pay for one family license that I want to say it's like ten dollars and it's good for ten years or something along those lines. It covers everyone in your family to, to operate that radio. And it's, it's a step down from your, your ham radio.
Great, thank you for clarifying that. And the other question I had was, so kind of the takeaway I got from your presentation, by the way, thank you for that, is that as a, as an elected official, I should come down to city hall when there's an incident, when there's an incident large enough?
So we have built within the code, well, the code red's the software on the backend. It's our alert North Shore notification system that when something happens, we'll be, we notify staff and we notify, you'll be notified of what's happening and where to go. But yes, generally speaking, it would be peer probably in the council chambers or a secondary conference room, if you have any other space in the room, in the building, that would be, you know, it's, it's just a small meeting. You guys will kind of be kind of hanging out while the E O C is, is doing its thing. And but that is all done through that, that system, that code red system.
Thanks so much for clarifying those. Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, well, thank you very much for the presentation. And I apologize about your name. Okay, so seeing there are no other items on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn or surely just adjourn? All right, we could just adjourn. Thank you all.
Thank you.